Welcome to our February Township Supervisors Meeting. I can't control the weather, but we will try to be on time and we will not close down the government. So, I'll call the meeting at this time and invite you to join the board, stand and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time we'll have the roll call.
Jerry Long.
Here.
Arthur Zerby.
Here.
David Lineboggs.
Here.
Michael Reiner.
Here.
Elizabeth McGovern.
Here.
Carol Morton.
Okay, since our last meeting, we lost a local resident and a fire company veteran. Jim M. Musser, 64, passed away on Saturday, January 19th, at his home following a several year battle with ALS. He was a lifetime member of the Bonesville Fire Company and served as fire chief for 17 years. His wife Susan and three sons, Andrew, Eric, and Douglas, would have grown up in our township, attended Brecknock Elementary, and graduated from Garden Spot High School. He served our community for most of his adult life and he will be missed. I asked each of you in your own private time or style to petition our curator for comfort and a blessing on the Musser family during this time. I'd now like to take a moment of silence to reflect on Jim's service and his effort to make our community a safe and better place for all of us. This time we'll have a public comment session. I limit it to four minutes each person so everyone gets a chance to have, share any concerns. If there's extra time, we can go back and the board may wait until everyone has their say before responding. I set my timer at four minutes. And does anyone want to start? Yes, just state your name and...
So I'm Tori, since I'm from Bonesville Fire Company, and I wanted to thank the township for all the help they gave us the day of Jim's funeral, from Carol to the ruined apartment with the dropping off signs, closing the roof and whatnot. Thanks for your part in making that memorable for the family.
We are in your debt. Anyone else? Yes.
Jared Artis, Deputy Fire Chief of Fire Five Pointville. Each one of the township supervisors, and with Carol, has a new report from the fire company. You guys have any questions, feel free to contact either myself or Nelson, the fire chief. Thank you guys again for your support for the past year.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Roger Sauter. I serve on the sewer authority board. And I think, at least Fred, or I don't know who else, has been pestering at least some of you guys about possibly getting a lateral ordinance for trying to stop some of these leaks getting into our sewer system. And they came out and picked on me, I guess, because I was easy target. But I've got a video of what these leaks look like and what happened. We have a six inch pipe laid into everybody's property. They have a rubber adapter that goes down to a four inch pipe. I don't know if you can... But they're starting off inside on the four inch pipe, and when it crosses over, you'll see the teal colored pipe. And that rubber grommet is leaking on mine pretty bad.
It's not moving.
Did we...
That's going.
Oh, is it?
It looks like.
And then when he gets across here, you'll see him drag dirt in and you'll see the water carrying the dirt.
Oh, yes, that's what they're... That was just...
Now it's moving.
So, what's happening is when it gets wet, our flow numbers bump up by a little over 100,000 gallons a day. Now, I can't imagine we've got that much from just this, but we do get a bunch from this. If this is a gallon a minute, that's 1,400 gallons a day.
I'm not seeing anything yet.
You don't see the water? Let me come around.
Not substantial water. Are you...
Well, but you've got to realize, a gallon a minute is not...
I mean, I'm not galloping.
No, well, I just, I just...
There's a...
There goes a gallon.
Sorry. Are you saying what we're seeing here...
Let me just back up here. So now we're crossing over into the bigger pipe. And there's water laying across here. Now, this is... Now, you see the water carrying the dirt down through there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He had also, which he didn't have a file of it, he had their big, their better camera from the bottom side seeing what was coming in, figuring it was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a gallon a minute coming out of that seam.
Yeah, yeah.
Matt's telling me that we're seeing this all over the township, where they're coming, leaking through that joint.
Well, I know we've seen a resolution a year, year and a half ago, maybe even two years. And I think that we kind of got hung up on how to implement it. That did not come across as, how should I say, something that was, is bothering the homeowners. Now, we talked about some type of ordinance that when the property is sold, or changed hands, the township would require an inspection done at that point. But some of these that maybe are leaking, maybe never get sold, so I'm not sure we've found the right...
There's still holes, there's still holes in that system, because when you look back through, typically, now, last year, we just had, you know, every month was wet. At least half the months, our flows go down to 300,000 gallons a month, which we assume is about what we're actually producing. If you run that camera in those times, there's not going to be any water coming in.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I know they're, anyway, they're pushing hard for that, but even if we do that, and you video everybody, you're still going to probably miss half of them because you catch it in the dry times. So, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not sure that's the 100% perfect answer either.
Yeah. And I'm the one who says gradual improvements are better than delayed perfection.
So, we are running the cameras around and video, and then we're catching the fresh water coming in, but we don't have any system in place on how to deal with that water when it gets in.
Yeah. Our council, you have not seen the proposed...
Was this the one from Fred Ebert, though? I thought we did. I saw that.
She did see it.
Yeah, I did.
It's been a while.
It's been a while, yeah. I did see it. I know we had some concerns about the enforceability of it. Actually, I've never seen anything like that before. I know it's a problem in many municipalities and for many authorities, but actually to get in there, you know, to check out that with a private property owner...
And like I'm saying, he's been pushing hard for that. And like I say, again, that on an average year, six months out of the year, you're not going to find it.
Right, right.
So, you're going to penalize people, and if they do it in a dry time, it's worthless.
Right, right.
So, you know, I'm not sure...
It's really hard to catch them when they're doing it, you know, and to enforce it. I just...
It's tricky.
Yeah.
And I'm not necessarily saying I know the answer. I just wanted to show that, you know, this is what the problem is.
Yeah.
I know Fred's pushing real hard for that ordinance.
Well, I appreciate you coming out and showing this. Would you consider coming back next month as a guest and then bring a copy of your ordinance and maybe we can discuss it a little more and maybe get it all zero, you know, get it built in?
I... No problem.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak in the public comment session time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our guests. We have Ron Hershey here tonight to speak about 318 Staver Road.
Roger, can I have a minute? Excuse me. I'm Ron Hershey. I'm with Hershey Survey. Tonight we have a plan, which is a lot add-on plan for 318 Staver Road. We've gone to the planning commission. They have made the recommendation for conditional plan approval. And I believe they also acted, recommended action on one of the waivers and would be outlined on the January 17th technicon letter. Property that we're looking at here is 318 Staver. It's a very small postage stamp lot. They had gone through the zoning for some variances for setbacks with a small home on it, little driveway, and et cetera. It would be just west of, just west of...
Bonesville.
Yeah, Bonesville, sorry. There was another road name there. I didn't think of it without, yeah, but west of Bonesville Road. Off of Coach D's property right here in the back, here's your 40 feet that we're adding on to the back. According to the technicon letter, this January 17th, one of the items we discussed was road improvements and specifically with regard to adding additional right-of-way along both Coach D and the Staver property here on 318 Martin property. So, we have updated our plan to indicate the 25-foot proposed liquid right-of-way on our side, entire length of front of the property. Updated the lot areas net to reflect that. We did ask for a waiver of 9827(c)(3) and 47, which was, as it relates to monuments, concrete monuments, to be placed along the right-of-way. We had proposed iron pins to be set. We have set those pins since our last meeting, so they are set, property corners. So, tonight we would be looking for conditional plan approval based on the January 17th letter and action on waiver of section 9827(c)(3) and 47.
And just for the board, there was a follow-up letter of January 30th, I believe is in your folder. That reflects the recommendations that the planning commission approving both waivers and then the conditional final plan approval. So, if you were to...
I wasn't sure, was there a waiver also of the 9518?
It was a partial waiver.
Partial waiver of the road improvements.
Yeah, partial waivers showed the right-of-way.
Cartway, which is the cartway and the shoulder width.
That's right.
That was the waiver.
Is the letter from January 13th inclusive of everything he's requesting?
Yes, the January 30th letter has everything. Correct.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hershey concerning his request? If not, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendations from the planning commission to grant the partial waiver request from 9818d2 and the waiver request from 9827(c)(3) and provide final plan approval on the 313 Staver Road lot on per the letter, January 30th, 2019. I second it. Motion was made to grant the waiver request as requested. For those in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
I guess your secretary got the actual waiver as it was conditionally planned approved as well.
Yes, I got it.
Does it hurt to check?
Have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, our next guest on the list tonight is Robert Landis. Would you come up front and explain what your requests are?
Good afternoon, I'm here. This is my first supervisory meeting, sir. First of all, thank you for taking the time to hear my words tonight. Two things on my mind that I emailed Carol, I'm not sure what all got related to you, but the first would be for permission to tap into the public sewer line. The property on discussion is 1542 Dry Tavern Road, which happens to be boxed out of the service area for the public sewer, for the properties that can apply for it. And the second thing would be to somehow get around the stormwater management requirements since there was a dwelling and outbuildings on this property a few years back. I anticipate building a house and garage on this property in the near future. It's going to be a good requirement.
Well, I think we'll handle them in the same method you proposed them tonight. We'll talk about the sewer requests first. And I, we do have a map of the property, and we also have a map of the sewer service area as it was defined, I don't know when, 20 years ago, or maybe when it was first put in.
That map, probably based off the last 537 plan approval.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And we have it in our packet here. Is it where the service, sewer service line is delineated? Is that your property line?
Yeah. Looks like it boxes my property out.
Yeah. Is there any reason that seems to have excluded a portion of his property?
I don't know the rea... I wasn't here as part of the 537 discussion. Fred Ebert was the one who actually prepared that plan at the time. Now, my understanding is that one of the reasons is because it actually, that area is connected to the game and school small package plant. It's not connected to the wastewater treatment plant. So, that's one of the things that Fred Ebert, who reviewed this request, had a concern related to the connection of a house to a small package plant versus the main plant because of the maintenance issues that are probably already being found with the game and school plant. And DEP is not typically forthright about adding additional users onto individual small treatment systems versus a wastewater plant. So, that was probably one of the reasons why that area... Obviously, there was a different proposal several years ago for that property, much larger church use, I think was proposed many years ago, different flows and so forth. But he does still have a concern, even if it's related to any additional connections to that. I'm just referencing an email that Fred had sent, I believe it's in the board's packet for your reference.
Mr. Landis, can you point where the house is going to be located? It looks like this chunk here is what's excluded, which is this chunk here.
Yeah.
Where do you think your house is going to be located?
This game and school road, right?
Yeah, and here's 897.
It's going to be almost across the driveway, would be right in, approximately right in here.
So, if we were to close the gap, there's a bottleneck. Your house is going to be within that area?
Mm-hmm. Closest, trying to think of my...
Do you see what I'm talking about?
Kutz. Fritz would be the next to me, but there'd just be a couple hundred yards from us.
Do you...
I'm over here. Right in here somewhere.
I'm going to look at his, because he is...
Let's go back to the back one here. Right, see, I'm saying, we close the gap right here.
The house would be going in right here.
Yeah. We would limit, can we limit the sewer service area to just a portion of his 40 acres or...
Well, the answer to that is yes. I think one of the other things, and I'm somewhat familiar with this, is Mr. Landis would have to go through a planning module. He would have to obtain a consultant and prepare a planning module submission to the township. Because it is not in the sewer service area, there would be a review of that by this board. And you could, if the board was willing to allow the connection, you can allow additional conditions onto that, which could restrict it to a one EDU or a one house, I would think would be one of your conditions that you may want to consider as part of that.
Are you saying we would not have the authority to simply change the sewer service area?
Not on your own without going through a planning module. Because DEP, right now, they have this map, and in order to amend this map, you would have to go through a formal planning module submission. And Fred's is actually recommending that if the board was favorable for it, you go through the planning module submission and not include that in your special study that you're doing currently. Because it allows some more flexibility to the township to have some conditions placed on that use, whatever it may be, to include it into the district at that time, versus you lose that flexibility somewhat if you do include it in your special study.
Is there a certain amount of time that's normally required on the planning modular process?
The planning module is, it's a matter of how long it takes the consultant to prepare, but then DEP usually has up to 120 days to review and approve that.
The fact that, my understanding is, the church was planning on using a connection that's already there. Two. Two of them. Well, two units. Two units.
Two EDUs.
Two EDUs.
Yeah.
Were they put in the...
So, they were approved, they were approved to tap into the public line?
To my knowledge.
For a commercial church, but...
I don't know if that was actually approved. I can't say that. It's too long for me to...
They were pretty far along with their plans. I agree with that.
I did see a letter to that extent.
Okay. Due to the timing of it, regardless, it would still require a new planning module submission. And that's not the township's regulation, that's its state regulation.
That's correct.
So, what are our options here tonight?
I would say option one, if you're in favor of allowing the connection, that you could note that accordingly tonight, and then Mr. Landis would then have to move forward with a consultant and then have that planning module prepared. He would probably want that direction before he invests time and money into preparing that.
Right, because then the township has to sign off on that.
Right. Right. He would at least have your blessings, so to speak, of the concept to allow the connection.
Does this all go into the game and school?
It would go into the package, the small package plan of game and school, yes. And option two, obviously, is to deny the request and then he would have to, he would go an on-lot route. He would do soil probes and perks.
I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
When was the last time a sewer planning module was done in the township here?
Any subdivision or land development, or...
When was the last time?
I don't remember, or, we'd have to go back and look.
Do you remember?
I don't.
Andrews Way.
Did we ever do any?
Andrews Way.
Okay. Like all subdivisions like that would.
Yeah. Andrews Way may be the last one.
It would be part of the process of the subdivision, which...
Hawk Valley had to do it also.
Well, there was homes built, just like his, just over the line, and they just hooked up.
Well, I haven't done any since I've been the engineer. I don't know what happened before that, but I'm not aware of any that were just allowed to hook up, that were not... They may have already been within the sewer area.
No. No.
I'm not aware of any. I don't know...
Now, another question is, according to Fred, about the capacity going to our sewer plant, you know, to watch yourselves. What happened from when the sewer plant was built, a year later, there was not enough flow going to the sewer plant to operate it properly? They had to bring liquid in from this sewer plant, yet, to my knowledge, there was only two homes since then. What happened from then to now that now we have to be concerned about the capacity?
Is this to the Beam Road plant or...
No, to our plant.
I don't know. You'd have to ask Fred Ebert those questions, or he's the authority's engineer.
You know, we went from we need more sewerage flow to keep the plant operating properly to now we have to be concerned, we weren't using enough water. There was very little water being used. We don't wash that often, you know? We try to conserve. But no, it changed. The wording has changed. And I don't understand why, that now we have to be concerned. Sometimes Fred ought to come and talk to us. Well, I'm looking at the future growth map over there, and that's down there. Now, Fred currently is working on updating the 537 plan. Is that, does that contain your property there, Mr. Landis? The purple. And what...
Well, this little, all except the little triangle here, if I'm looking at it correctly, this would, yeah, because this is Kutz's property, that come the deepest one, or Fritz, I'm sorry, Mr. Fritz. Yeah, the house would be right in that purple.
So, what's the significance that Fred is currently doing a special study to update the 537 plan? It's possibly looking at that same area, but he would not be looking at it as to tie into the game and school road package plant? Probably not.
I'm sorry, can you re... Just ask the, I'm not sure I've caught the question. I think a lot of these questions are meant more for Fred than what I'm prepared to give input on tonight. I don't know...
When does the authority meet?
Probably last...
Last year. Okay.
Yeah.
Jerry, in his memo, he states that if you handle it as an individual planning module, you could put specific conditions on it.
Yeah, that's the basis of the reason why...
Versus if you would include it into your special study, then, you know...
You lose that ability.
In other words, that's under the old business underneath the sewer plant. If you go to your old business tab, it's just part of that memo where he's updating the 537 study. It would be the last paragraph there. He states that, right here.
Okay, I would rather have this handled as an individual planning module.
Right.
Where specific conditions can be placed, okay.
Yeah, and his comment was just merely, he doesn't want to have the applicant go through the process and spending the dollars without the blessing of the board of the concept.
If we would add that piece in there, and that lot would get developed at some point, would that give them right to just hook up regardless?
Well, that's why Fred is making that suggestion, because of putting a condition on there, like I said, more or less, I would probably think his condition recommendation would be to allow one house hookup and no further development of that parcel.
But if that were included in the sewer...
If it was included as a full, Mr. Landis decides to build a house, but then I want to subdivide later and develop it in whatever, fill in the blank, use that's allowed in that district, then they would already be included in the district, then you would have to provide sewer service to them. And that could go in any number of directions with the flows, versus the planning module would allow you to restrict that.
But it wouldn't be, it couldn't be developed. It can only be developed to a certain point because unless the board changed the zoning.
Yeah, he can do whatever's in the zoning, obviously.
Right.
Yeah.
But he wouldn't be able to build a development for the houses or anything like that.
No, but he could subdivide into a church, and that would be two more EDUs in addition to his house EDU. So, you're looking at, just in that example, three. I'm sure there's other examples that could yield additional EDUs. And again, they're all going to the same small package plant, you know, which could be problematic.
Does anybody know how close that package plan did Max out?
Fred Ebert would have to answer that question. Yeah, I don't have visibility on that.
According to Art, it's not...
You mean, you're talking about the capacity that the sewer plant can handle? I spoke with Brian, and he said he would easily sign off that there's plenty of capacity for a few more houses.
I was told we don't use enough water. Well, I think the opinion of this board is to support you in making a connection to that existing, you know, service line and tap what we have to do to implement that, I'm not quite sure.
Well, if you're willing to do that, I would think you'd probably need a motion to that effect, Liz.
Yeah, I would do a motion so that it's on record.
Right.
That you would...
And the motion is to what? To...
To allow him to submit a planning module to the township.
And then Mr. Landis would then proceed with that planning module preparation, and he would submit that at some point in time.
And then you'd have to prove it again.
And we would approve it again.
With the condition.
Right.
Or we could also have him included in the updated 537 plan.
You could do that, too.
You could do that, too. You could do that, too. It's not the recommendation of Fred, but that is another option you could do. The problem with that, obviously, is the timing. We don't know the timing of the completion of the 537 special study, so that could be longer of a process than a planning module would be.
Are you talking about the one that's going on?
The special study, yeah.
I think that's gonna, yeah, well, I think it's gonna involve a whole lot more than just simple one or two connections into the waste management, that waste package plan. It's gonna be a little more of a covering that whole area and what would be required to...
That could take a lot. I mean, that could take...
Your plus.
Yeah.
Is my guess.
I don't know if you're looking to hook up, but that would be really...
Versus a planning module's probably half of that or less, yeah.
Can you explain to me what a planning module is? Is it kind of like a building application where you have a bunch of information to fill out? Or why is it a planning module?
It's fairly involved. You'll have to hire an engineer to prepare that for you. But there's a number of documents that have to be completed and signatures signed off by different parties and things like that that the consultant can explain to you in further detail.
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap and it's not easy and especially for that kind of connection, it's pretty substantial.
Yeah.
Is there any way that you could put an on lot system on your property?
He can do that tomorrow. He can, obviously, that's an on lot sewer service area currently. So he could contact Quinn, have soil probes and perk tests done and install an on lot system.
So you'd rather have a septic, on lot septic system 100 feet from my creek than me plug into the...
Well, I'm not saying what I'd rather have. I'm just trying to see what your...
That's just your current option.
Your options.
Does that sound friendly?
Well, if one is an on lot sand mound that can be done tomorrow or a complicated, expensive sewer module that takes two years to do, you tell me which you'd rather prefer to do. I don't have a problem supporting you on the individual planning module and continuing on. But you'll have to decide whether that ultimately is your best option or not.
Okay. Well, I spoke to a few people and they encouraged me to do, to plug in if I can. So that was kind of the direction I was going.
Yeah, I think on the long 10, 12 years down the road, it certainly would be.
I didn't know it would be this big of a deal, probably.
Yeah, it's a big deal with the module. I mean, they can make the motion, you know, and then you can consult with an engineer and see how much it's gonna cost you. And you can also, you know, put the on lot system in if this is not cost effective for you. But it is, it is an expensive, somewhat grueling process to go through with DEP and it's not cheap. That's all I'm gonna say. Even though an on lot system isn't cheap either, but I don't know.
Comparatively speaking.
Which one is better? I think maybe, I don't know what your experience is, Mike, is...
Well, for the on lot, I mean, you're talking, if you find a sand mound, you're probably talking $12,000 to $15,000 with permit.
Right.
You know, the module might be half of, half of that cost just to prepare.
Yeah.
Just with engineering costs and the application costs. Before you even plug in, before you even have the...
Right, plus your connection fees and everything else.
And what do they charge you for an EDU? Do you know? Is it...
The tapping?
Yeah.
Four, five thousand.
Five thousand? So that's not a fee.
So about $4,500 somewhere around.
Yeah. So we talked about the one option is your on lot. The other option is an individual sewer module to connect onto gaming school road sewer plant. The third one was if we just left it go and you think you could be part of the ongoing one, but that's probably not a viable option. Now, what if we just asked the authority to expand the sewer service area of just the wastewater treatment plant that's there? Or is that basically what the planning module is doing?
That's what the planning module is doing. And actually, we are the ones that allow the expansion of the sewer area. I know it's a little hard to follow, but the township's actually the one who sets the boundaries of that and then the authority implements the sewer within those areas.
What happens if he just hooks up? I mean, there's been other houses. And I have no faith in DEP. I sat here at this table with them and Coach Holly told, did I ever get the runarounds and some issues? I told them straight out, I don't need to deal with use anymore. They change the laws as they go. As they sit in a meeting, they would change the rules. What would happen if he just hooks up like other people have?
It'll be illegal.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know who's approving that.
Right, we couldn't approve it, right.
We won't be issuing a building permit.
Right.
That's the, I mean, we'd be assuming liability as a company as well. And a township.
You know, the average young couple that wants to build a home, it's tough. These are...
Well, unfortunately, he's dealing with a sewer service area that was established on the last 537 plan that could have easily included his property and didn't.
It'd be really interesting to know why that junk's out of there, if there's a, you know, if there's a reason we're not seeing or something.
I'm sure. I probably had to bid on approving that 537 plan.
It was that time period.
It was probably because of that package plant. To restrict the EDUs going to that package plant. I'm sure that's why it was that way. Because that parcel was a very large parcel and at the time, nobody knew what was gonna happen with...
It could have been a lot of different uses, like I was saying. And the flows were in question, so you wouldn't allow, typically you wouldn't, for planning purposes, you wouldn't allow a significant amount of flows being added to a small package plant.
Well, I'll offer a motion that this board would make a statement of support for Robert Landis in him preparing the individual planning module and have his property included within the service area currently of that gaming school sewer plant, package plant. Would that cover everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion. It was second. Those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
There's one thing I'd like to say, though.
What?
Since he is faithfully going to build a house and his little business, I don't think we should come down on him for having what he has there, you know, with his equipment and stuff, at any point. Because he is faithfully trying to make it all comply.
I don't disagree with you.
Just so you know.
Yeah. Okay, your next item. You put in, put up a building and jump in here. I don't want to do this all by myself, but... You put up a building and you utilize the small projects stormwater management plan, correct, on the building? Now you, how many, how many feet away is this? 1,000 feet, 2,000?
From where?
From where you're...
From the shop to where I built the residence?
Yeah.
It's on the other, the other side, the other end of the property.
How many feet? 900.
My guess is 1,500 feet, probably.
You think it's that far?
The way across the creek. It's almost from gaming school road.
How far to the stream? Not that.
All right, you might be right. It's probably 900, 910, 9100, probably, yeah. Right legs. Across the, across the back, it's not as far as it seems.
Three football fields.
When you go around the road, it seems a lot farther than it is through the woods. You're probably right.
Okay, but the point is, let's say it's 1,000 feet away. You're proposing to build a, a house and maybe a detached garage or whatever. And you're feeling like you would like to do it as a small projects application? Or you want to claim credit for some buildings that were there previously? Is that correct?
Yes.
Have you pursued any of them and what are you finding out?
Pursued what?
Either your stormwater management plan for the house.
Have I pursued it? No.
Well, you must have a little bit, because you're asking for a relief of what?
Yeah, Levi had helped me with providing it. I didn't bring along a paper of the outline of the structures that were there a few years ago before the church had bought it that they destroyed. So obviously, our issue is a time barrier between when the buildings were demolished and when I prepared to build. Does that make sense?
Well, but your, your second request tonight was what? It was to, what was your second request?
Well, I don't know if I worded it properly, but to be able to use the square footage of impervious that was on this property, you know, four or five years ago or whatever, to be counted as toward my impervious for the new, new house. I'm not sure if I have all the right terms.
Well, I guess what I was, what I read through your email and stuff, that the new structures obviously would require a stormwater management plan so that your increased runoff is contained and on your property. And if you haven't pursued that yet and don't know what the requirements would be for that, it may not be that big of an issue, or you're thinking it would be.
No, probably not. I mean, you might let me do a cistern at the, at the show.
Maybe I'll chime in and help the conversation a little bit. I was only made aware of this through Levi, actually. He had emailed me with some questions that I think that Mr. Landis had related to whether he needed to do stormwater or not for a new house. The direction I had given, the question was, there were structures that were previously there back in 2009 that were removed. And some of the question had to do with, can he get credit from a stormwater perspective for the removal of those structures? Given he was removing impervious as part of that 2009 removal versus what he's proposing with his new house? And the short answer was, no, he could not get credit for that. And the reason being is because any new impervious or removal of impervious is only tracked since the date of the last amendment and the ordinance is pretty clear on that date, which is in 2014. So essentially, anything before that, you did not get grandfathered in for credits for stormwater management. There was a second component to that because Mr. Landis had an application for another, a new building on the property since 2014. That's the ag building that's right along Dry Tavern Road. With that proposal, he utilized the small projects application, which allows you up to 5,000 square feet of impervious to do a small projects application. Anything that would get added beyond that, after that point, would then have to go through a full stormwater plan for whatever they're proposing. So the short answer is he used the 5,000 already with that other building and went the small projects route. So now that's why a new stormwater plan would be needed for the house and any other improvements that he would be pursuing at this point. So those are the two things that are, that are kind of working here as far as the stormwater requirements are concerned. The date of the ordinance being one and then the fact of using the small projects before for the other structure.
When was the other structure built?
Recently, 2017?
Yeah, two and a half years ago or something like that.
16, 17.
Do you believe, I asked you, Mike, the stormwater requirements, what you call full, full blown stormwater management system for the house, can that be in reality, built something similar to what you did for the shop?
To some degree, yes. I think it would have to be a little more involved than what was done for the shop only because for the shop, they only utilized the cistern with an overflow. They didn't necessarily take into account all of the impervious that was added to the property. So there is a little bit of differences. The small projects gives you a little bit of leeway as far as the regulations are concerned. The stormwater management plan basically takes into account anything that's being improved.
It's not the, not the management system itself, it's a plan where the...
The plan's a little more...
Houses and the money usually come in.
That, and there's a little more of a performance standard that has to be maintained with a, with a full stormwater project.
If you subdivide the property, then you could do another small project.
Well, the subdivision ordinance would actually remove you from the small projects also. We worded it that way. We had a couple of things over the years where people tried to do, maneuver around the regulations somewhat. So we had to insert some of that language to avoid that situation.
And the board would not have authority to waive the full pledge?
You cannot. You can't. Stormwater, you can't waive.
So what are our options?
He's gonna have to do a full stormwater management plan.
Right, with ENS and that usually is, is, any new house project that comes into the township is usually always has stormwater and ENS associated with that. Conservation districts involved with that. The other thing that comes into play is, and I don't know to what level your development's concerned, but if it's over an acre, if it's turbines, an MPDS permit would also be required from DEP.
I'm not sure that's likely, but...
Well, that may be the case. I don't know.
Does the board have the authority to give him credit for something that was there previously?
Not under the ordinance. The wording of the ordinance is not allowing you to do that, so you gotta strictly, you know, read that stormwater management ordinance and comply with it.
What are you thinking, Art?
Well, I'm thinking, he's not the one that tore the Hassan barn buildings away. The church had plans. I imagine they were gonna utilize that square footage, you know, in their stormwater. Just because somebody else done something, should somebody else be penalized after the original person done it? You know, to me, if you took the square footage of the house, barn, odd buildings, and then put that total and then take the impervious surface of his ag building and see if there's any left over, I just feel it's fair, and I know you're gonna go back and say the ordinance, but them buildings were there. They were there all that time and that can't be done?
I'm just telling you what the ordinance says. And that's all I can go off of. I will also tell you that the ag building and the paving area around it exceeded your small projects application criteria. So if you wanted to look at it from another standpoint, he actually did receive some credit by not having to provide additional stormwater for the ag building. And I don't know to what degree that is, but that is just another side note.
And you're saying the board does not have the authority to grant relief of its own ordinance?
Not stormwater. I mean, there's some ordinances that you can grant relief or waivers from.
Usually like design criteria and things like that, if you wanted to do pipe sizing, whatever the case may be.
Try to cut him a break that way, you know, with the plan.
But just stormwater in general usually can, yeah.
And I'm not saying he shouldn't do no stormwater at all. Stormwater is important. It's very important.
Well, the other, the other thing, I mean, just for the board's consideration is, I mean, I can provide him with consultant names and, I mean, there's various ways to slay the stormwater requirements that are not, I would say, cost prohibitive to do that. It is done on a fairly routine basis. So, I mean, if you can find an engineer that can do a cost effective proposal, I mean, you can do that, but relatively low cost.
Well, and as far as the, the stormwater facilities that would have to be put in, I'm sure he can do them all himself.
And that will further reduce the cost, yeah. And, and that will further reduce the cost, yeah, yeah.
So would you find out the, depending who you have designing, putting it in, it makes a big difference in the actual cost?
We had customers that did their own, pretty much on a napkin in the township, located them. Another ones, you can spend 30,000 for a project like this on the plan, till, till you're ready to move dirt anywhere with everything, too.
Right, I think as Mike suggested, that you could do this, you know, if you use the right people, and, and, you know, Technicon is reviewing the plan, you're making sure that-
Yeah, we typically give names of, of consultants who are familiar with the ordinances, familiar with the review, familiar with the whole procedure, the area, that's also a big thing. And I think the names that we give are not generally people that usually charge excessive fees or things like that. They're very reasonable. They're welcome, of course, to use anyone, but that's, that's generally, we try to do that as a, as a courtesy.
Well, I think the board would, would like to work with you on this, but it seems like it's beyond our control.
I guess you're telling me every municipality has to go through this?
They do. They have stormwater management ordinances that they have to comply with. There's no waivers. There's some exemptions that the builders or applicants can get if you qualify for that, and you meet the exemption criteria, but there's no waivers that you can get from stormwater management. And unfortunately, every municipality has to comply with, you know, stormwater management, everyone. It's, it's a costly process, and everybody complains, and I understand, but it has to be done.
In this day and age, Art, almost every new house has to go through stormwater.
Yeah.
And that's almost a guarantee.
From where he wants to build this house, there's a catch basin? That's supposed to catch all this water? You know what? It don't even take a five-gallon bucket of water and catch it in the bottom. Unbelievable. And what you put that poor man through, and the thousands of dollars for nothing. I, I understand stormwater's important, don't get me wrong, but sometimes there's an overkill on some of these things.
You mentioned there would be some exceptions. How do I find out what the possibilities are there?
I, I think that Technicon had already-
We've already given you those, yeah. You've, you've essentially, you've used your exemption up with your other building. So the process that you went through for the other building was actually your exemption, simplified method, small projects application. It's, it's similar terminology. It's, it's different, actually, each county, but Lancaster uses the small projects, same as exemption, yeah.
As an ag building, would the other building have required a stormwater management plan?
The one he proposed?
No, the other, the building that's already there.
That he already did, yeah. He, he-
It's not an ag building?
It's an ag building, and it was, put on the application is 4,999 square feet, which you're allowed up to 5,000 for the small projects. So he pursued the small projects application for that project, and then it stalled it.
So there's some exemptions that come through the ag?
You're allowed up to 5,000. That's, that's the ag exemption.
Without doing any stormwater, or just a small project?
You're given 1,000 square feet, and below, you don't have to do anything. So it's 1,000 square foot. Anything between 1,000 square foot and 5,000, you can do the small projects application. And that's regardless of what the use is, ag use, residential use. It, that's, it applies to both. Anything over 5,000, you would need to do full stormwater. And that's, that's a countywide ordinance, Dave. That was adopted by Lancaster County.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
You know, it's not like it's a-
It wasn't a Brecknock Township ordinance. We adopted the countywide ordinance that they came up with.
Yeah, I did more studying of that 537 plan than I cared to.
Well, I don't think we have anything we can offer tonight, except if Mike is willing to at least try to point you in the direction of some people that maybe-
Sure, we absolutely do that.
And I would think that, you know, take that route, make it big enough that you, yeah, if you do additions later on, you're covered or something.
That's a good point, too.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for coming, yeah. Okay, you have the minutes in your packet. We have the minutes from the reorganization meeting, and we have the minutes from our January reger supervisor meetings. Are there any additions and corrections to either? And if not, can I have a motion to approve them?
I make a motion that we approve as presented. The reorganization meeting minutes of January 7th?
Yep.
Wow. And our township meeting of January 8th? No.
Yeah, next day.
As presented.
A second.
Okay, we had a motion to approve the minutes, and it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, you have the bills to be paid, and you said you added one. Do we have the updated? Okay. We have the bills that totals 86,403.35. Have any questions on the bills? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I make a motion that we approve the bills in the amount of 86,403.35.
A second.
Okay, the motion was made to approve the bills, and it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have the roadmaster's report. I see the roadmaster's not in attendance tonight. Last month, we talked about garage doors. Art, you'd made a suggestion to, um,
Finish the other-
Finish the other four.
Yeah, right.
Will you make that as a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to include openers on those doors?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I'll tell you what. Till you open the garage door and pull that truck out, and then you crawl out of that truck and go in and pull that door shut, you left all the warm air outside, you gotta start the heating process all over again.
Okay. So we have a motion to have shank doors installed, four doors and four openers. Is there a second?
I second it.
No, you made the motion.
Oh, okay, well, I tried.
We had a motion that was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, the question for probably either Carol or Mike, the roadwork on the cog.
Back to the doors.
Okay.
I did talk to Shank about running it through our account, we get a 15% discount on the doors.
Awesome.
Is that something, i- if we were to do that, would it need a motion or anything?
Is there any problem with that?
I'm thinking that there could be a problem. I, are, are you gonna get any financial benefit?
No.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's going through the township, though. It's not going through your company, right? I mean, the, you're not paying for it.
I asked him about that, if I could just, if he could just build a township, he said he'll find out.
Yeah, well, if he can build a township directly, it's okay, but we can't utilize your company to do that.
If, if, if Dave's company was invoiced, but the township paid off that invoice, would that make a difference?
Yes, that would be in violation of the ethics law.
Okay. So you'll have to wait and get, for him to get back to you and see if he can build a township, and then he would, could be exempt from sales tax?
We'd be exempt, yeah, from sales tax. We have an account with them with sales tax. He's exempt already, yeah.
About sales tax for that, yeah.
Yeah. Now, I was questioning the roadwork for the cog. Does that be resolved tonight?
Yes, this, the resolution just needs to be adopted, which has the quantities that are on that detail that he has there. He would just need to adopt the resolution 2019-7 to include, um-
And, and this is where he's gonna add these quantities to be bid out?
These are going to be bid with the cog.
Yeah.
Yes.
Even though it's intended to be as close as accurate as possible, if, there could be some minor changes made.
Absolutely, yeah. We just need to include these square, this square footage, and on the resolution, it has the total square footage that we're proposing to use, and that can change a little.
Okay.
But we need to include these in the resolution, so that they can advertise. It also, the, the resolution also states that we're allowing Earl Township this year. We, we took over-
West Earl.
I'm sorry, West Earl.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We did it this, last year. They're doing it this year.
And that is resolution 2019-07?
You got it.
Well, when Art gets back, we'll continue.
The other resolution that's in here has to do with the bidding out of the roads you already authorized to accept bids for next month's meeting, in which that allows for the blacktop exclamation, escalator clause.
And we do that every year.
Yeah.
And that is resolution 2019-08?
You got it, yep.
Art?
Yes.
The list of roads that are on the, uh, Art, is there any one you have a problem or do not want to see on there?
Well, first off, I have to let you know that you and Dave will probably have to put this through, because, again, I'm not in favor of spending money for something I don't believe in. So, you, you understand?
Yeah, yeah.
Where I'm coming from. So whatever you do here, it's gonna be with you and Dave, because I-
But is there any one that if you were to choose and say that, based upon your experience, that that particular road could wait another year, or, um, or does it look like the roads that he has chosen to be, um, I asked Dave the same question. There's five roads listed for single oil and chip, single-layer oil and chip. East Pfeifer Road, East Pfeifer Hill Road, Landis Road, which must be a, a small, a small one, Gaiman School Road, which is the largest one, Pfeifer Hill Road and Stonehill Road. And then two roads for ultra-thin friction, course B, Wheatland Drive and Redtail Circle, and then line painting. And the total looks to be like 100, 100 and, um, oh, yeah, 119,000 dollars' worth of. Is yours, is your opinion the same on the ultra-thin friction as the single-layer oil and chip?
No, those are development roads there.
So you have no problem with those?
But as far as the other roads on top, East Pfeifer Hill Road?
Yeah.
Looking at that road, and I haven't seen it for a long time, but I know what it looks like, rather than doing what you plan on doing here, that road, to put some of the profile back in, would really be better off with an overlay. Same with Landis, it's so short. Landis is, oy gee. I, I don't know if it's the length of, it's about the length of a football field, 300 feet, or come.
Okay.
And Pfeifer Hill Road, same thing. You know, you're, you're only chipping a road that needs more than that. That's the way I feel. Gaiman School Road and Stonehill Road are the ones that were overlaid the last, those, it's so hard to decide. Those, uh, wouldn't need attention as quick as the other three that are listed. But there's so many things to do with the roads. Everybody has their own opinions and, and ways of doing it, and-
So you're saying you would just not tar chip and overlay them every time they go bad?
No, they, uh, I do like that slurry stuff.
RC 200 or 250 or whatever?
No, no, no. The stuff that they use, the slurry, that's slurry mix, that's pretty nice. Stuff that has the concrete in.
The stuff that's gonna be in development, doing the ultra thin?
Yeah, yeah, that, that stuff there, that stuff's holding up, it seems, but-
It's just more expensive than the single-layer tar chip.
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Art.
You know-
But we've been band-aiding all our roads for too long, and yet it's the only, seems to be the only option we have. We, we're leaving Stone, or, uh, Silver, Silver Hill Road go, we're leaving Five Point Hill Road go.
Yeah, but you know what? We don't have the budget to do that.
I know, I know.
We don't have the money.
I know.
And the people don't want to pay more taxes than they have to. So, it's tough. It's not easy.
From what I've heard and talking to different people, the tar chip does prolong the life of the road. So I guess for that reason, I, you know, I can see doing it.
It prolongs the life of the road. There are cases where it came off within the first year.
You don't think it's prolonging it for the amount of dollars we're spending on it?
You can go over them, and I know roads that have been hit several times. And depends how many times you're only chipping the road, you could overlay it if you'd have saved the money.
It's hard to figure out.
And you gotta watch yourself in this cog program, because if the bidding goes low enough, I've heard it said from the other roadmasters, they're not, they're not putting, let's say, let's say that you could put down the oil at certain thicknesses. They're just putting very minimum on. There's been cases where they had to come back and have them do it a second time, because all it was, was a little bit of, of, uh, liquid and stones. The other thing is, the oil and chip, it's really not an oil anymore. It's water-based. It ain't like years ago. You know, years ago, when the oil and chip, they had an oil. But you're looking at water-based. I've seen Willow Street at Shipp's Grove. They put it down. It didn't even last a year.
Boulder Hill didn't, and the bottom, and-
It didn't even last. It, it comes right off. So, it's so hard to decide. You know, the bad spots on these roads, you're talking East Pfeifer Hill and Pfeifer Hill. Yes, they are the way they are, and they're, they're cracking. But you realize the time we put on them roads with the tar buggy? We'd hit them roads in two or three days, and they were sealed for another two years. But I fully understand us, East Earl. Boy, I think maybe, maybe Kinnar. Very few, very few townships will go out with tar buggy. That's the best oil, RC 250. I mean, it's, it has elastic to it. The reason they don't go out, and they wanna, because nobody wants to work like they did years ago. You can take that thing, I'm serious. You can take that thing, go out, you can really seal roads with a good oil. But nobody wants to work. They all want to go, let's go with the cog program. They'll coat our road for us. It'll look nice for a while. Whatever you decide.
Well, I, I don't disagree. There's roads that- There's roads that, that have lost their profile.
Yes.
And we're still oil and chipping them because we can't afford to do an overlay. Now, the question, um, do we get another two years out of it by oil and chipping? Three years? That's, that's what we're talking about. Can we get another three years? But the problem is, after three years, we're still back to where we were. And we still can't afford to do an overlay. So, we keep kicking the tin can and, and I guess we'll have to kick tin can one more year.
And you're hoping for a lot next year.
You'll have another list of roads, the oil and chip, all over. And every two, three year, every three years, you'll be looking at the same roads.
I know, I know. That's where you, you could pick out two roads there and just say, take off the list.
One thing I will, and I was so thankful when Levi Hoover was on the board. We overlaid twenty-seven roads in this township in our town. Do you realize that? We build up roads, we put in that base because I knew those roads were gonna get heavier traffic. And we built them roads up. If we wouldn't have done that with a light overlay, we'd have bad road junk. We picked out the roads that had the poor drainage and the poor profiles. Our roads were, there were some roads that were really in bad shape years ago, but we did twenty-seven of them. But we, how much oil and chipping did we do? Nine.
Well, I know. That some years you, you, township spend eight hundred thousand dollars in overlay. When I came on this board in two thousand sixteen, the budget was two hundred forty thousand. We couldn't do the eight hundred thousand dollar overlays and so, you know, we've been fighting back ever, ever since.
Those roads are, are built up.
Ah, they are, I agree.
Good shape at this point.
So, which roads would you take off that list if you wanted to, um, not waste money on all of them?
Well, if you, if you're gonna take two, I'll take the two newer overlaid ones off. Gammon School Road and naturally Stone Hill. The others, Piper Hill, Landis and East Piper Hill. Oy gee. They probably haven't seen a layer of blacktop. In twenty-five years.
I'm pretty sure I was living on East Piper Hill that last time I was paid.
And how long was that?
That's, uh, yeah, nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six or whatever. That's the last one I moved off of, uh, there was before that.
How many years is that?
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, there was a couple of years before that.
Okay, let's, let's get back on track. You would suggest that we take Gammon. Dave, can you support that? Dropping Gammons and Stone Hill and single oil and chip, the other three. Do the full, uh, ultra-thin friction on Wheatland Drive and Redland Circle?
I could go for the, I do believe it helps to, uh, put tar and chip on. It helps seal them up and, and prolong the life of the road. And then Stone Hill, I, I would prefer to leave Stone Hill on, a lot of traffic on there.
But that doesn't really, that, it's not that bad as it is.
I know, that's why I think I should be left on, get it before it is bad.
But if they would do crack sealing on there, they might be able to get.
Well.
That, that, Stone Hill doesn't have a problem with the profile yet, does it? So, hearing you though, I think Gammon School Road, they do some ditch work stuff there. Would be better to oil and chip that one and leave Stone Hill's is.
Well, Gammon School Road, there's only a few areas where they really should take the tar buggy.
Does it get a lot of traffic on that one?
It does now. Uh, they come off the turnpike in two twenty-two and they, I don't know why, so much traffic cuts up on the side of my place and then goes across. I, you wouldn't think there's that much traffic in the development over there.
See, I would think Stone Hill, Dave, I think Stone Hill is a better base.
That's why I wanted, that's why I thought it'd be good to get on top of it before it goes bad. Once it's like Silver Hill, it's a little late to be, I won't go.
Yeah.
Well, when the day comes and you gotta do Silver Hill. And Five Point Hill.
I know. I know.
You're looking.
I know.
Silver Hill, I don't, I don't think a million dollars would correct it.
Well, I got Art agreeing, or conceding he'd go with three. Can we get, can I get one more out of you? You'd, you'd, you would drop Gammon School Road, but you, you wanted to do Stone Hill.
I can see where Dave's coming because nowadays, they try to say, preserve your good roads and let the other ones go to nothing. But then, you know what it costs to build the other ones again?
They already need base work and stuff, it's, it's. Really putting a bad band-aid on it.
I, I know, but we're, we're talking nine thousand dollars for Stone Hill Road. And fifteen thousand for Gammon. I mean, on the total expenditures of eight, nine hundred thousand a year, we're really talking. This is like Trump and the wall. It, it's really just a very small portion of the. Of the, um, you're not gonna make a big difference either way.
You're right. Look at them all together, you're still at a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah, well, we, we agree on the ultra-thin friction, which is forty-six. And we agree on the line painting, which is twenty-five. So, you're up to seventy, we're just, our, our contention is the forty-seven thousand, which if you drop Gammon School Road and Stone Hill Road, you're only, you're dropping twenty-four thousand.
Is Stone Hill something they could get with the pitch buggy, Art?
They only have to do any alligator areas with the tar buggy. I never worried about a single crack. A single crack ain't going nowhere. There's no car gonna have an accident over one single crack. And, and all your roads will get a crack in time. But you take their side of my place, Gammon School. When they're, all them trucks come out of Lippert, and there's a lot of them now. And they come and they come around that bend, they're hitting that edge. That's alligator. That's the kinda stuff that's be preserved. I've seen spots that were alligator cracked so bad, I said, well, we're gonna tar it. And we did. And I couldn't believe it. There we are, years later, and it's still in place and the cracks, they're, they're all sealed. But.
So, Dave, I, I would agree if they would go out with tar buggy with this, what is it, the SRC?
RC two fifty.
RC two fifty.
Heavy oil, two fifty.
They can do the same thing by maintaining.
But they gotta get out there, you gotta get out there with that tar buggy, you gotta put the effort into it.
Instead of doing a constant, single layer of oil the whole length, maybe eighty percent's not doing anything.
Eighty, sometimes on certain roads, you're only looking at five to ten percent.
Yeah, I'm for that.
What?
With the tar buggy, if they get out there and do that.
On Stone Hill Road, what about Gammon School Road?
We can do that on there too.
Okay. Okay, well, then I'll make a motion that, that the roadmaster can forward to the cog committee. Quantities for East Maple Grove, East Maple Hill Road, Landis Road and Piper Hill Road in single layer oil and chip. They can forward the quantities for ultra-thin friction on Wheatland Drive and Redland Circle. And they can forward the quantities for line painting, line painting. As, um, if those changes are made to resolution two thousand nine, two thousand nineteen dash seven, I'll make that as a motion.
I second you.
Okay, the motion was made in second, those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have, um, the next, um, motion, or. Resolution two thousand nineteen, okay, yes, go ahead.
Thanks, sir.
This is for the, um.
That's the escalator, you're talking about the escalator clause?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the escalator clause we do every year for the road bids that we do, are, are the overlay.
Okay.
Painting work.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight, which will allow an escalator clause for the, to this material to be included as part of this proposal.
I second you.
Okay, the motion was made in second, those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's, um, some information on the bridge. I'm not, do you know what the latest? You're, you, you provided an engineer that actually went out and provided a report on?
We, yeah, we work with a structural engineer who specializes in, in bridge work. Which is who we had go out, uh, through member of the board, had authorized that at a previous meeting. They did provide a report, uh, of their findings and I did forward that to Andy. So, he has a copy of this. I did not hear back from Andy, but I, I just offered if he had any questions or.
Okay.
Concerns of what they're recommending. But that is basically noted in their cover letter that you have in your packet.
Well, I guess in his absence tonight, we'll, um. Move that on to next month. Okay, we have.
Just one, just one thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't mean much. It said, "Good road over Buddy Creek."
Wow, it's not Buddy Creek.
That's not Buddy Creek.
I didn't, I actually missed that. So. I'll let them know that.
I don't know if that makes a difference.
It doesn't.
No.
No, they were at the right bridge, I know that.
Okay, we, uh, Township Engineers report.
Yes.
Oh, that's right, you did one.
Okay.
Art.
There's a part-time road.
Oh, yes.
Crew person that, they should, while they're on roadwork. Make it retroactive, I guess, hiring.
Yeah. Do you wanna make that?
Well, I don't even remember his name.
James.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Hosh, Hosh Hosh. Hosh Hosh.
I don't know how to pronounce it, I'm sorry.
Whatever. I make a motion that we. Include James Hosh Hosh.
Jeff. Jeff.
To a part-time road crew.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, the motion was made to make it retroactive hiring.
Jeff.
Jeff. It was second, so there's a favor.
Oh, it's Jeff.
Say, there's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion. Motion carries.
I was saying, I was saying, yeah, I heard.
Now, the Township Engineers report.
Thank you. You have a copy of my report, I'll just reference page number four, uh, at the bottom. Item number one was already approved, that was the lot add-on that we discussed earlier with Ron Hershey, so we can skip over that. Item two is the John D. Martin Stormwater Project, is a financial security release recommendation in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Item three is the Dale and Krista Good Stormwater Project, financial security release, uh, in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Item four is the Robert Zimmerman Stormwater, uh, financial security release in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I do have one addition, is the RGS Investments, uh, land development that we are reviewing for Planning Commission this month. We received their memorandum of understanding, so we need to accept that memorandum of understanding for that project.
Are there any questions for any of these, um, items that are being recommended for approval? Is there a motion to take action on them?
I make a motion that we accept the referenced. Material that the engineer has just described.
Second. Okay, the motion was made to approve the action as recommended by the Township Engineer, it was second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, you have an SEO report. And you have the zoning officer's report, does the zoning officer have anything else to add? Okay. Does the solicitor have anything?
Nothing, nothing to add.
Is there a motion to approve the roadmaster, engineer, SEO and zoning officers' reports?
I make a motion that we approve the roadmaster, engineer, SEO and zoning officers' reports as presented.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made in second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have, um, under park and recreation update, we have a guest, Mr. Tom Martin tonight.
Good evening. Uh, don't know, there was a letter that was sent to the Township, do you all?
Yeah, I have it, yeah.
All right, great. Uh, just wanted to review a request from the Adamstown Library, which I am a board member of. Every year they have a summer reading program, which basically kids can sign up to read books and they get credit for it throughout the summertime. And they're hoping to also include some physical activity with that. So, the, something that can go right along with their reading sheet, is they would have space, um, to, to do a rubbing from various areas of parks. Similar to like, uh, the Purry Maze I went to with my kids a couple of years back. Where we, we're in the maze and it was kind of proof that you're at certain areas in the maze, so you got credit for it when you got to the end of it. So, uh, they're looking to install a small plaque somewhere in the Purry Baker Park. Approximately quarter mile from the parking lot, maybe down by the pond someplace. Uh, we did discuss this with the Parks and Rec Committee a couple of weeks ago and they were in favor of that area. If possible, to use an existing, uh, we were discussing about installing new posts, maybe to put this plaque on. And they said maybe there would probably be a sign somewhere they could actually use to put the plaque on, so there would be no new posts to mail around, so. We will be open to that. Basically, for the approval to, uh, to include this park in that program along with several others that are in the area. To, uh, get some people out and about moving in the summertime along with reading. So, that's pretty much it, any questions or concerns about that?
Is this a one-day event?
No, it's not, this would be, uh, there isn't, there isn't really an event, this would be basically, kids sign up for the program, so this would be general use of the park. It wouldn't be anything special, there would be no, maybe like a family that has their kids reading. They would just show up and maybe use the playground and also do this walk. There would be no set, um, event or anything like that, it's just throughout, it's open throughout the summertime. General use, like the park would normally get, there would be no, there would be not distinguishable between a normal person using the park or a person that's actually using this program.
But is there a start and stop period for that?
Uh, yeah, it's the summer vacation period, it would be like the, uh, what would be like June to August, I guess timeframe would be the, the time when they have the summer reading program. It's a type of thing where at the end of the program, they get like gifts from the restaurants and things when they complete it.
And what numbers of people will be participating at one single time?
I don't, uh, only at one single time?
Yeah.
I don't see ten, fifteen, you know, it would not make a noticeable, noticeable difference now, so use of the park in one day. I'd say similar to like, uh, there's, sometimes people have done geocaching there, I guess, which is where people are giving coordinates and they're trying to find a, a hidden, um, prize or a hidden, uh, spot. Maybe similar use of that, which you don't like, it's negligible, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions? Okay, the, uh, park and rec, you met with the park and rec committee?
Yes, we did, yes.
And they did note that they have no problem with utilizing the park and they think it's a good program. So, would someone care to make a motion that the supervisors would grant permission for this activity?
I make a motion that we grant the Adamstown Area Library and hospital involved here.
Well, it's families, F. D. Hospital.
Yeah.
They're the ones paying for the, any cost.
To utilize the park as was described by Mr. Martin.
Okay. Okay, the motion was made that supervisors do grant permission to proceed with this, and it was second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Levi, is there any update on the progress at the projects at the park?
Not more, other than, you mean the park from the park and rec meeting, or?
The, the, the homeschool and then the restrooms and the construction project.
The, uh, restroom work is underway.
Okay.
The rough electrical is in, rough plumbing and rough heating and interior works, uh, largely done, so we have some extra work to do, but, um, yeah.
Any, uh, projected completion date when?
Uh, it's a, it's a project that's not big enough to twist contractors' arms, to drop everything else and come and do our work. So, it seems to, when they have an open day, they come. I've long said long, uh, real projects are, are. I've long said long, little projects are more time-consuming than big projects is, than, yeah. So, projected date, I'm hoping within a month or six weeks or something like that.
You're not aware that the plumbers have any long lead times on fixtures or anything?
No, I'm not aware that they do, but I could, I could tell them, make sure they have them when we need them.
Yes.
We have to put, as soon as it's warm on the inside, we'll put a coat of paint over top of the block for it, and then we're ready for the fixtures.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Under whole business, we have the Act 537 Plan, we just briefly touched on this earlier, that Fred Ebert is doing a special study to update our 537 Plan, and it looks like we're gonna have to keep reminding him every once in a while to update his report, because it doesn't seem like a lot's happening, but we'll continue to do that. Okay. Moving on to new business, we have delinquent real estate taxes to be turned over, right? What's the procedure here?
Just make a motion to authorize the delinquent list to be forwarded to tax claim for collections.
Can someone make that motion?
I make a motion that we turn over the list of delinquent real estate taxes to the Lancaster County Tax Claim Bureau.
Yep.
And the base amount, I guess that's it.
It's 1631.67. Oh, no, no, no.
There.
No, here.
Oh.
There.
Oh, that ain't so bad.
No.
And the pay, and the duplicate base amount of $1,631.67.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, the motion was made to turn over the delinquent real estate taxes, and it was second, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
One question, that didn't include the interim's?
Uh, it doesn't matter, that's not the delinquent.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay.
It's okay, you're fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, we have to approve the real estate tax duplicates.
I make a motion that we approve the real estate tax duplicates for Breckton Township, which is 2,791 accounts. Taxable accounts at the base amount of $151,009.56.
Okay, the motion was made in second, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we have the streetlight taxes to be approved.
I make a motion that we direct the tax collector to de, to be the streetlight taxes on 668 accounts at the base amount of $55,146.82.
Okay, the, we approved the streetlight duplicate taxes, and it was second, does it favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have the Bowmanville and Fire, and Five Pointville fire company activities list to approve. Is there any questions on either of those? Just want to add anything to either of those?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I didn't never hear it until I read this. The Candy Cane Sander Run.
Yeah.
When does that take place?
So that's basically, we have Santa Claus going around in a fire truck.
Yeah.
And we hand out candy cane.
Oh. I thought maybe the firemen all get together and run around.
Yeah, no.
No, I never heard it mentioned that way, the Sandy Cane Sander Run. So. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the, both fire companies' activity lists?
I make a motion that we approve the activity list for Bowmanville and Five Pointville fire companies as presented.
Okay, the motion was made to approve their list, and it was second, does it favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, you have the kennel amendment language in your packet, but no action is actually required until we get comments back from Lancaster County Planning Commission, which would forward it then to the Township Planning Commission, and then they will forward any comments at that time, so there's, nothing is needed for that. And then the next item is apartment and townhouse language. And this was discussed in depth and deeply, definitely with the Lancaster County Planning Commission. As we've been getting properties in the township that have been converting into apartments or building apartments, and the most recent one is Souders had a house burned down and put apartments. We realized that our current ordinance does not have a maximum density of apartments. We have some minimal lot coverage areas, but it did not have any maximum density for apartments. We did have some for townhouses. So the Planning Commission had discussed this at our last meeting, and made some recommendations for some changes. And you have a draft model ordinance, a draft ordinance in your book. Some of the changes that were, or amendments that were being made for corrections. One, of course, the maximum density for apartments. We've, would have added that the maximum density for apartments would be eight units, eight dwelling units per gross acre. And the model for that is, again, Souders, they had a one-acre tract, and they were able to put eight apartment units on. They, they couldn't have probably, they couldn't have put another one on with stormwater and with parking and stuff like that. Not having a maximum density in our ordinance allows prospective people that want to improve their property to try to put nine or 10 on. And then they find out they, they need variances for setbacks, and then you end up trying to squeeze and squeeze and squeeze. By, by establishing a maximum density per gross acre does give some guidelines that we know is doable. The other areas, we found some inconsistencies were townhouses. We said the maximum density in our ordinance was 10 dwelling units per gross acre. Now, I would say that if you could only put eight on, how could you put 10? But it said the maximum density would be 10 if the dwellings are not on individual lots. Meaning that if they were on individual lots, there would be no maximum density per gross acre. And the Planning Commission felt that that could be struck from our ordinance where the maximum density is, is 10 units per gross acre. Whether they're combined or on individual lots, it wouldn't matter, the, the maximum density would be 10. And then there was another section under definitions of a townhouse, the definition of a townhouse was a dwelling, a, a structure that had from three dwelling units, but not more than six dwelling units in a single structure. Elsewhere in the ordinance, we said townhouses could not have more than 10 in a, in a townhouse dwelling. So the recommendation was to make that match the definition of a townhouse, and would not allow more than six dwelling units attached together. Then there was some discussion over the minimal square foot area. And the ordinance that you have in front of you, in addition to what I just described, townhouses would have a minimal square, 2,000 square foot per interior dwelling units. And 4,000 square foot for the end. But provided that the total lot area for any townhouse dwelling should not be less than 10,000 square feet. It would basically restrict the townhouses that have these small 2,000 square foot parcels that are in the center as individual lots. That type of density, the feeling is that would, should require public water and public sewer. And, and some of this concern was, these things are, have to do with the residential medium area. Residential is the, is the orange over there, which is our largest residential districts. We have about 500, over 500 acres of residential medium. And if these densities are not defined better, then theoretically we can have that type of density over this whole area now. Maybe an, an answer would be to, to break residential medium into two classifications, residential medium one or residential medium two, and allow more density in, in one and not the other. But currently, as a conditional use, unlimited number of apartments without any density could be permitted in the residential medium area. And townhouses with, if they're on individual lots, would not be restricted to 10 maximum unit densities. So we have the, the ordinance in your packet. Do you just have any questions or comments? I gather you at least looked through it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I'm not much of a planner this way.
Well, we, we, I think our population, our, our residents wish we wouldn't be growing so fast sometimes. They wish, you know, we would somehow slow them out, trap, increase traffic, our roads to be safer for teams and horse and buggy. And I would say if we do nothing, then that continues unchecked. This is just a small step into trying to lower the amount of density per acre within our RM. If we want to maintain the village concept, which is a residential density of about two and a half dwelling units per acre. If we want to maintain the agricultural communities and the single-family homes at the two per acre, we certainly aren't helping to achieve that goal by allowing either apartments without maximum densities or townhouses on individual lots without reaching maximum densities. Do we have to allow any apartments or townhomes? I, I think that.
Yeah, you can't be exclusionary to that type of use, I mean, it is the type of a residential use that you have to provide for in your ordinance.
What type of?
Apartment and townhome.
If you have an apartment in the house or something, it wouldn't have to be described as what we're talking. And if you're talking.
If you have an apartment though in the house, I mean, it, there, it does then become sort of an apartment building, I guess. And not, no longer a
Not just a single-family rep.
Yeah.
I think the village concept is very typical in Bowmanville and even in Five Pointville to, to maybe split them into two apartments, or you know, you have apartment upstairs, you have apartment, you know, maybe three apartments. Where I think that some of the attempt on clarifying some of this is we don't have the 40-year apartments. You know, just simply trying to find some way of, of checking that before it grows over, or you know, before we have people coming in and, and like they want to put more apartments in, in, on a tract that really is not feasible, and they max it out. And then they find out they can't even put a patio out back because they're exceeding the lot coverage, and then they, they request invariances and waivers and and they're so far in the process, we feel like that they're the horse leading the cart, or they're the cart leading the horse, and we're just simply watching it. The the process here would be, could be, one, one option would be to accept the recommendations from the Planning Commission, and forward this ordinance to the county for their review and comments. Or if you pick something out that you want to just hold it and check it, we can take it back to the Planning Commission. Planning is tough. You're stepping on someone's toes every time you try to provide planning. There's the ones that want unlimited growth, and there's one that's want no growth. There's, we do, we will be running up against our, our sewer plant capacity at some point, and increasing and allowing larger densities of more than eight and more than 10, obviously deplete our available connections to the sewer plant faster than what the single-family units do in Hawk Valley's, of course.
I have a question, if I can find my page.
It's all the way at the back.
No, no.
Oh, different.
It's the Planning Commission minutes.
Oh, right here.
Okay.
Planning Commission minutes.
Okay. Now. The townhouse is an apartment. According to this, Levi Huber votes.
Yeah.
Do you have knowledge why the one Planning Commission member voted against this?
Yeah.
Do you, do you know the reasoning there? I'm just curious.
He is of the mind, or opinion that it's a good location for high density. And I think he was looking at this particular spot rather than an overall perspect, overall perspective of the township.
So you think he was just looking at that one?
That's my impression, you know, the location, the location there close to Route 625, he felt was the optimum location for, for high density.
And that's why it's so important when you go through with ordinances, it's not just for one.
Right.
It's one property or one set of people, it's for the whole township.
You gotta look at it.
I was just wondering why.
That's, that's my opinion of why he votes that way.
Okay. He did say he wouldn't want that next to his property. But that's where the, the, the option of designated that, that particular, smaller areas as an RM1 and an RM2, or you break out different densities. You know, I, I think someone asked me, or they told me to look at East Calico's zoning ordinance and how they handle the densities of townhouses, and you look at East Calico- And you look at East Calico and it's like, no, I'm exaggerating. They got like 35 different zoning districts. I mean, it's like, it's like, it's, it's, it's mind boggling. We are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, you know. I'm, I'm looking over right there on the, on the board, you know.
There's nine.
Or, nine.
Yeah.
That's all we have. When you get into trying to determine, designate different areas of different densities and you're adding, you know, we, I remember when we did Ag 2, we used to just have Ag. And then we did add Ag 2. The rest of these were pretty much as far back as you and I go. But yeah, we did add, we did add, add an Ag 2, the most recent.
And a mineral recovery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Now, I didn't mention that when we noticed some of these discrepancies or the lack of having a, a density, a maximum density for apartments. I, the earliest one I found was our zoning ordinance in 1981. And under townhouses and apartments, it is the exact same word, verbatim, what we have now. So it's like, I guess we just never had, it never, it was never addressed or, and I would think in 1981, I don't know if we had a single townhouse or apartment complex because the earliest ones would have been maybe by the post office.
They were.
And that, that was more recent than 1981. So I, I just say that some of the, the language that's there should, could certainly use a closer look. And I look at maybe this ordinance here as, as a small step. And we are talking with the other townships to consider a regional comprehensive plan again. And the next regional comprehensive plan should be finished. And then we will look at our zoning to see how our zoning can support that regional comprehensive plan. So then we might even be getting into deeper on how we want to define townhouses density and apartment densities to match the vision and goals in our regional comprehensive plan.
It seems to me if we can change it from 10 to 6, we should be able to change it to 4 or 2 or none.
If, if it shares the vision of the comprehensive plan, it would make it easier.
No, but we're, you know, if we drop the townhouses from 10 units to 6.
The definition of a townhouse. Not the density.
Why don't you make, why couldn't we just make the definition 4 or 2?
Again, I, I think we're talking, I, I said this. How would I say, small incremental improvements instead of delayed perfection. It's possible if, through the regional comprehensive plan, we focus on densities down to four and five and then have anything over that be an east or a blue wall where they have public water and public sewer or that type of density diverted to East Calico or somewhere else. I believe if we had the support and the, if it was, if it was the vision of the, of our comprehensive plan, then you could be looking at townhouses of five or less.
I know you kind of exclude any uses, but it's, uh, if you could explain that to me.
Are there any other comments or thoughts on this? What would this ordinance number be?
I don't know, I thought looking. We don't need to know it.
Okay.
Until it's adopted, just. The only thing I would add to that motion would be to authorize this ordinance to be sent to the Lancaster County Planning Commission and also to be advertised.
Okay, okay. Well, then I'll, I'll make a motion that the, we accept the recommendations of the planning commission of the amendments plus the additional tax that was created under this draft ordinance. And we authorize it to be sent to Lancaster County Planning Commission for their comments, review and comments. And then also back to our township planning commission for their review and comments. And then I would add that we would immediately advertise it so that it is, notice is served that we are in the process of amending it, advertised immediately, and we would schedule it to be heard. Do we have to pick it a month, like April?
We might be able to get through in March. I, I don't know. I, my colleague here is sitting here tonight in the audience, Beth Alman, and she had contacted Lancaster Planning Commission. I, I don't know, did they say that we could possibly get in on the February meeting?
So technically, no, I mean technically, yesterday was the deadline. And we were there March 11th.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which would be that last review before.
Our meeting.
March 12th meeting.
Okay, so it looks like we have to have it.
Maybe, maybe they could let, squeak it in, but April would be sort of the, the technical normal standard procedure.
So I, I made the motion that we would go ahead and, and forward this to the Lancaster County Planning Mission and our own. And then we, but we would immediately advertise it as an amendment, a proposed amendment to our zoning ordinance.
Just a question.
Yeah.
What if it comes back very negative from the Lancaster County Planning Commission? Against it after you advertise it?
That is something that could happen. Now, that's up to the board then if they would want to accept Lancaster County Planning Commission's comments and revise the ordinance, then it would have to be readvertised. Or they don't have to accept their comments and just go forward with the advertisement. It was my understanding that the township was concerned about, you know, the apartment and townhome use, you know, coming in and trying to get it, you know, clarified in the ordinance because there, there were some discrepancies that existed, so they wanted to act quickly on that, so. But you are taking that risk of having to possibly readvertise if you don't.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to agree to those comments and. But it's not that comprehensive of a zoning ordinance amendment, so I don't feel that you'll have too many comments.
So I don't remember, I made the motion, was it second?
No.
Okay.
No, seconded.
Okay, the motion was made in second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I just have a quick question, going back to the kennel ordinance.
Yeah.
Did we, did we receive comments from Lancaster County Planning Commission? Not yet.
Not yet.
Do, did you want to advertise that though? Did we?
We, we already did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think you did that one already.
Okay.
For the March.
March meeting.
Yeah.
That's along with the rezoning.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It's not actually advertised yet, but.
It's been scheduled to advertise, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we ratified that, that that's our, that reflection of.
They authorized last month.
To advertise it?
To advertise it and to send it to Lancaster County Planning Commission.
Thank you, thank you very much, Carol, that's what I was looking for.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have.
You have two minutes yet till nine o'clock.
Well, that talk. Maybe somebody else wants to talk.
Anyone?
What's at nine o'clock?
Nothing, just, just, I just looked at the clock.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn at two minutes before nine o'clock. Okay.
Motion's made to adjourn, it was second.
I made the motion.
Yes, I said the motion was made and it was second. Those in favor say aye.
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 You're the table reporter, right?